My carmate.
Denise.
Did my mic set?
No.
You just heard what I said, okay.
No, what did you say, sir?
I have to be very, very careful tonight.
Yes.
Very careful.
Give me a chance to open up.
Yes. I thought for sure you just heard that. So Jerry, I'll open mine. Do you have a quorum?
I think everybody's here.
Deb's not. I don't think Deb is, but you still have a quorum. I'd like to bring to order the November 8th meeting of the Tivonan Town Council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk. Counselor Perry?
Present.
Counselor Cook?
Present.
Counselor Janek?
Present.
Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Counselor DiMediris?
Present.
Counselor Burke?
Present.
Counselor Viera?
Present.
All present. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to the School Committee Chairman to open his meeting.
Okay, I'm just gonna open up the Tivenan School Committee meeting. That's all we do.
Yeah, I know. Thank you. Consent agenda. Approval of town council minutes, October 18th, 2021, special session. October 25th, 2021, regular session. Acknowledged receipt of minutes from boards, commissions, and committees. Economic Development, two. Cemetery Commission, two. Town Farm Renovation Committee, one. Open space, two. FTR and Personal Changes Advisory Committee, one. Personnel changes, excuse me. Acknowledged receipts of reports, Town Administrator. Department Monthly Reports, October 2021. Police and Fire Department Overtime Reports, October 2021. Acknowledged receipts of correspondence. Verizon New England Contact Information Update. Susan Anderson Historical Preservation Advisory Board Chair Letter Regarding Hawkins Development Proposal on Fish and Souza Roads. Susan Anderson Historical Preservation Advisory Board Chair Letter Regarding Brayton Solar Development. Approval of Tax Assessment Abatements, $27,232.45. Approval of License Renewals, Non-Advertised, December 1st, 2020 to November 30th, 2021. See attached list for Tobacco, Vipdaling, Holiday, and Antique. Would any of the councils like to take any of the consent agenda meetings? Consent agenda off for discussion.
Okay. All right, I would like to pull C1.
Okay.
For the Town Administrator Report.
Yep. Anyone else?
I would like to pull A2. The approval of the minutes of October 25th.
Anyone else?
And also, I would like to pull...
Donna, you only get one shot.
B5. Oh, one shot?
I'm only kidding, I'm only kidding.
I jumped in on hers.
It's Deb's fault.
Okay. B5, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept all the other.
Motion's been made to accept the rest of the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in approval? Unanimous. Deb? I'm just gonna go with mine.
That's fine. So, the minutes on page four. Where Counselor Burke motioned to waive policy and proceed to the aforementioned reappointment seconded by Counselor Perry. The motion passed six to one. It was actually five to two because Counselor Cook and I was also opposed.
That's right. Madam Clerk, you have that? So page one, ah, page four?
Page four.
The zoning board review?
Five to two?
Yes.
Five to two, and I was opposed.
I'd like to entertain a motion to accept A2.
So moved.
As amended. As amended. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Counselor Cook? B5.
All right.
FTR and Personnel Changes Advisory Committee.
Yeah, I just wanna, I wanna not do a separate vote on that. I didn't want it to be all part of the vote.
So do you have any changes or any discussion? You just want a separate vote?
The only discussion that I just don't understand also, that I, other than the fact that I object to the whole thing, is that I don't understand why someone that doesn't live in town or is an elector is part of the advisory committee, which is the solicitor.
Well, because he is the solicitor.
He's there for advisement purposes only.
But he was voting.
We've corrected that since then.
He made motions through the whole thing and also made a motion to adjourn.
We've corrected that since then. Thank you, and we can redo those votes.
Should we correct the minutes?
Well, we did correct.
We can't, okay.
We can redo those votes.
Okay. So I'd like a motion to approve B5, FTR and Personnel Changes Advisory Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Six one. Donna, acknowledged received a report from the Department Monthly Reports, October 2021, C1.
Okay. In this month's report and last month's report, I noticed that the planner said CAO report. And there is no report. For this month, it's not included and it wasn't included in the last administrators. So there's two months of no report. Although it looks like I'm supposed to see some report, but there isn't any.
Where are you looking, Donna?
Okay. There's no numbers on these pages.
Yeah, there's no numbers.
Sorry.
I see it. Mike, just show me. So we can correct that easily if she has a report?
Is there a report?
There usually are. There's a report that she submits to the planning board on a monthly basis, and I think that's, I'm assuming that's the report that she's referring to.
Yeah, I looked at the planning board minutes, the ones that, well, this wasn't even, I don't think those minutes were in yet.
I think that this is more of a... It's a formatting issue. In other words, every month, we put this in there, and usually there would be a date for the actual report when it's available. And it should've just said "not available."
Oh, all right.
For both those, because they haven't been submitted to the planning board as yet. They're not completed yet.
So we don't have any?
We don't.
Any report for two months, then?
No, I have a report from her verbally, but I don't have it in writing yet.
Okay, so I have June, July, and August, that's all I have. Okay. The other thing is, is that it was very specific when we were talking to the Harbor Commission that the Harbor Master was supposed to have included in these, a report. And I've waited, and I know the season's over, but there should've been something in here. Season's over, or it went well, or whatever, because I think we discussed it in August, and yet there was nothing for September or October.
I think we also discussed it at our little group meeting, too.
Yes, and there's just nothing.
So maybe we can get something for next...
And I'm just saying, there are some problems, and there should've been some report on those problems.
Okay. So we need to amend this by putting no report available under planning?
Yep.
Do I have a motion to accept amendments for B5?
So moved.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, guys, it's C1.
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 So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Thank you. Unanimous. Is there any public comments, Joe?
No public comments.
Okay, so I'm not gonna pronounce this last name correctly, and I apologize. Cosma? Did I do right? Peter Cosma?
No, my, that's referring to a subsequent matter related to Broadway.
So he wants to speak before we go?
Which is on the agenda, so I'll let you speak then. Is that what you said? Perfect. Appointments and resignations, tax assessment board of review, three members, three-year term, two vacancies. Deborah Plant, 1006 Crandall Road, requests appointment to expire 10/15/2024. Deborah, you in the audience? I wanna thank Deborah for doing this, though, because we did not have a quorum, and now we do. So, that's very helpful. Any discussion regarding this? I'd like to entertain a motion.
Make a motion we waive our requirement and be able to appoint tonight?
Second.
She isn't here, but I do know that David knows her and correct...
That's a very good one.
Yeah, and recommends her. David?
Oh, okay.
The tax assessor.
Okay, great.
Okay, so I have a motion to waive. Do I have a second? I didn't hear it.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Entertain another motion?
Make a motion we appoint Deborah Plant, 1006 Crandall Road, to the Tax Assessment Board of Review vacancy, one of the two vacancies for her position to expire on 10/15/2024. Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Acknowledgment of resignations and retirements, Joseph Schramm, Budget Committee, and I can do these together, Adam Reposa, Town Farm Renovation Committee. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept these resignations with regret and thank them for their service.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Further discussion? I'd like to say, now we have several vacancies on the Budget Committee, and as everyone knows, this is a very important committee in this town. If anyone's interested out there, please see the clerk, because we are very close to not having a quorum if this continues.
More importantly, we have an even number.
Well, we do have an even number, and that's also a big problem. So, if anyone's interested, they start their meetings in January, so have two months to think about it. So motion's been made to accept resignations, and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. General Business, DPW Director Rogers, requests approval for pay-as-you throw trash bag holiday. This is the most popular motion we make all year. It really is. Beginning Monday, December 27th, 2021, ending Friday, December 31st, 2020, to advertise trash bag holiday and Christmas tree curb pickup schedules. Rick, welcome.
Hi, well, thank you for hearing my agenda request. Good evening, everybody. So yes, we would like to request that the time period between Monday, December 27th, and ending Friday, December 31st, be a pay-as-you throw trash bag holiday and its advertised along with the Christmas tree pickup.
So how many bags? Two?
Two, yes.
Okay.
And it's the same as it has been, Denise, in past years. So, it's only applicable to curbside pickup, not bringing anything to the landfill.
That's important to note, because some people think they can bring it to the landfill. I'd like to...
I'll make a motion to grant request for pay-as-you throw trash bags for the holiday season from December 27th until December 31st.
I have a motion in a second. My Counselor Edwards, correct? Any further discussion?
Just a quick question. Rick, is it our normal course of business that if a storm throws us off that week, we just extend it?
That has not happened, but yes, not to my knowledge, but yes, we would, they would get one curbside pickup.
Okay.
So if any particular day was not, yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Want to mention the Christmas tree pickup? It's on the same agenda.
Well, it's for both.
He did say that.
Yeah, he did say that. Rick, don't go anywhere. DPW Director Rogers, advertise for bids for specified recreation facility and turf management services for calendar year 2022.
Yes, thank you again, Denise. We would like to request that. The bids would be due December, if we get approval. The bids would be due December 17th, and they would, nobody's really mowing or doing anything in January, February, March, but it would be January 1st through December 31st, 2024.
Any discussion? I'd entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second, I'll second.
So the motion is to advertise for bids for specified recreation facility and turf management services for the calendar year of 2022. I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you again.
Are you coming up again? No.
But I'm here to answer questions if you have any. Thank you.
All right, bye-bye, Rick. Counselor Cook? Discussion regarding trash, drug, alcohol problems on Two Rodway as outlined in Harbor Commission correspondence. Donna?
Right. I would ask Mr. Carsmar and Kathy Lund if they're there. They can come up here if they would like. During the reading of this letter, I was at the Town Harbor Commission meeting, and from the letter, I identified town ordinances that were being violated that needed to be brought to the council's attention. Bruce Cox, the chair, gave me the okay to bring it to the council. And Two Rodway shoreline right of way has become a dumping ground, illegal drug use area, with unleashed dogs running around the area, as mentioned by Mr. Carsmar and Ms. Lund, which wasn't in their statement, but they did mention dogs running around. It sounded crazy to me. A proposed plan is stated in this letter to resolve the issue, which would need council oversight with input by the Tivonan Police Department and DPW. Discussion impossible vote. I included some letters, and then they sent me pictures, which you'll have in your packet. It was last minute. And I guess that the greatest thing about that is that I was, I finally learned how to forward out of Rhode Island.gov.
Perfect.
I'm clerked off this. I didn't know where it was gonna go. So, anyway. So, I guess we'll hear from this couple as to what's going on down there.
Thank you, Madam President, Counselor Cook, and thank you, members of the commission. If I may, can I distribute?
Of course.
Yeah. I guess they wanted to do, oh, I see, they're giving a GPS of it, Jack Island.
Oh, this is what I could go. Donna, did you do that, though?
No, I didn't have this. I'm only kidding. Honestly.
I mean, this is skill over here.
I was like sweating, I'm like, where's this gonna go?
So again, thank you for giving us the time to address you. So, my wife Kathy London and I have lived at 315 Sepauwett Avenue. Next year, it's gonna be 25 years. For those of you...
So you live on Sepauwett?
Yeah. For those of you who may not be familiar with the area, I just did a couple of Google Maps, sort of an oversight of the area that we're talking about. So if you come down south on Main Road, take a right on Sepauwett. Sepauwett heads west towards the Sakana, and then takes a dogleg south. There's a dirt road that takes a right northbound towards Jack's Island, that's Two Rodway. On the next page, you can see that our property abuts Two Rodway. So our property line is along the west side, the left side of Two Rodway. The Audubon Society with the Rooker Sanctuary is along the left side of Two Rodway, and they also own Jack's Island. Two Rodway, on this map, it's, I don't know why it's listed as Inlet Drive, but that's Two Rodway. Two Rodway is a town right of way, it's also a CRMC right of way. For those of you who are familiar with that area, it is truly a beautiful and a very special area, part of the Audubon Society-Rooker Sanctuary. It's a fairly secluded area, and people go there to fish, go to the beach, birdwatch. But because it is secluded, it's also a perfect area to dump, dump trash, and it's a perfect area, especially at night, for people to go and do drugs, have sex. How do we know this is happening? Because we pick up the spent needles and the spent condoms. Over the years, between ourselves, our neighbors, and the Audubon Society, we have spent countless hours, and I don't know how much money at this point, to constantly clean up that area. We've picked up anything and everything you can think of. The pictures that are attached are just what you would find if you went there tomorrow morning. Okay? So there is construction debris, we've picked up television sets, computer screens, leaking cans of oil, dead pets in plastic bags, anything you can think of, we've cleaned it up and put it in the trash. We've approached the town several times, most recently, I had a conversation with Mr. Rogers, asking him for help from the town to try to mitigate this problem. The response from the town was that this is not a town problem, that this is something that they feel our pain, that this is something that they're not, it's not their responsibility. In previous years, the town has been willing to give us larger trash bags for the community to be able to clean up the road. I was informed that's no longer available. So what we do right now is basically between us, our neighbors, and the Audubon Society, is we basically do it ourselves, because if we don't do it, nobody else will. And if we don't do it, then this idyllic area, which is a nature preserve, will be, will become a dump. What you're seeing in these pictures is what's been dumped probably within the last couple of weeks. It's a game of whack-a-mole. It will never end. And lest you think that this is a new problem, if you look back over the years of town council meetings, this matter has come before the town council, at least since the 1970s, when Mr. Sanford owned the property, and he approached the town council with the exact same problem. And the town council did nothing, basically kicked it down the road. I would, we've agonized over what to do here, and what we would like to propose, and will be proposed to the Harbor Commission, and copies of the letter to the Harbor Commission are in your packet, what we would propose the town to do is to make Two Rodway pedestrian access only. This would solve, or at least significantly reduce, the current problem on Two Rodway. There's a precedent for this, Three Rodway, which also has been converted to foot traffic only. I think that this would allow what Two Rodway was meant to be, which is an access for people to the water, to be able to go fishing, to go birdwatch, but not to drive down with their trucks to trash and dump on the property used drugs and other illicit activities. This proposal has the support of other people on Sepauwett Avenue, as well as the Audubon Society. I've enclosed in your packet a letter of support for this proposal from the Audubon Society. Thank you.
So, Two Rodway is a town-owned street? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
We plow it?
No, no, it is a town road, but it is not on the list of town approved.
So it's a paper road?
I'm not sure what the term "paper road" is.
It's not...
We're not sure either.
...there for further development. It's not an accepted road.
It's not an accepted road, so...
It's not an accepted road, yes.
Plated, but not accepted.
Right.
Right.
Plated. Doesn't mean we don't own it, right.
We own it, but we don't pick up trash, we don't do all of that there. And who owns, I know exactly where you're talking about, but I have to say, I've been on the town council for 10 years, and I don't remember this ever being brought up to us.
Well, this may have been a lot...
So it might've been a lot predated me, but I know exactly where you're talking about. Now, Jack's Island is owned by...
The Audubon Society.
Audubon Society. So they go down Two Rodway, and they potty at Jack's Island?
Yes.
They don't even make it to Jack's, because the, Jack's Island used to be somewhat maintained. I would say in the last, maybe five years or so, the trail there is no longer cut, so they basically just go down the road and park.
So they're pottying at Two Rodway?
Right.
Now, you said that, I don't know where Three Rodway is, though.
Three Rodway is Fogland Beach. So you said that that's only pedestrian access, but that's actually the road down to the homes at Fogland and around the backside.
It's south of that.
Brian, I'm gonna look to you, because you know this better than I do.
Yeah, so where's Three Rodway?
Three Rodway runs across Fogland, but then runs north-south on the island.
Right.
Okay, but that isn't pedestrian only.
It'd be on the right side going in Fogland Road.
I know exactly where you're talking about now. Right, but cars do drive down now.
There's a sign that says, access, no vehicles.
And there's, it's blocked, there are rocks there.
See, then I'm confused, then I'm not sure I know what it is.
It's where the boat, it's where the boat ramp is, right?
Yeah.
The old boat ramp?
No.
Yes, yes.
No.
All the way out towards the island itself, there's a, at the end of, western end of Fogland.
So you go down Fogland Beach?
Yep.
And then you take a right?
Before you turn right, or...
Before you turn right.
If you took a left, which is not blocked, it was a bamp boat ramp.
Yeah, it's an old boat ramp.
It's blocked.
And that's Three Rodway?
It is Three Rodway. But the reason why that was blocked is because there's ample parking there for people to park.
So if you go around to the right...
That's still Three Rodway.
That's still Three Rodway.
But that's not blocked.
That's not blocked?
Nope.
I know that's not blocked.
It's just a little piece to the left is blocked.
Also...
I'm trying to, that road's barely accepted, barely passed.
Offhand Road and A Rodway are blocked to vehicles as well.
Okay.
Those are similar situations.
Yeah, okay. So, my next question, and it's not that I'm against this, it's just I'm looking at the logistics of this.
Sure.
Where are people gonna, you may still have them walking down that road.
Mm-hmm.
So is that gonna become a parking problem eventually? So is that gonna become a parking problem eventually? Like, where are these people gonna park?
So there's parking at the Rooker Sanctuary?
So, so you want them to park, well, you don't want them to, but if they want access to down there, they'd have to park, and I know exactly where you're talking about, and walk down.
Yeah, if they parked on the road there, somebody's gonna hit 'em.
Right, that's what I, that's what I'm thinking.
I was at your house several years ago for a fundraiser, so I met you guys then.
So that, that's what I was thinking. Where would they park? Because it would be a traffic problem.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, Rooker has parking, and that's-
Yeah, people, yeah.
And there are trails back there.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. Now, is that open, that's open 24 hours?
Yes.
Is there problems down there?
I, I don't know. We haven't-
No, I'm just thinking, like-
Yeah, I'm not, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I-
We live, we live in the Emily Rooker's house.
You can come and talk to me if you like.
I will, hi.
Hi. I just need your name.
My name is Vincent Renaud, R-E-N-A-U, and my husband, you know, is right there. And we bought the house five years ago from the Audubon Society. So we've been living down there, and it's very quiet at night. There's-
So they go down Two-Rod Way?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we hear them going down the street, but they really, there's really no-
They can get cars into where it's secluded.
Right.
So, I mean, it just reinforces-
I guess I'm gonna have to walk down there again.
Yeah.
If we don't allow cars down to the water, which is where people go, and they do their drugs, and they drink, and they scream.
Whatever else.
Yeah, it would, it would be transformational to that area, that nature preserve, that idyllic place. Because people aren't gonna walk down there with a big old gallon of cooking oil like we found, right?
No, our couch, I think I saw a couch here or something?
They won't. You know they won't. Fluorescent light bulbs.
No, this is a nighttime, oh, of course. Why?
Well, no, because if I really wanted to, I'd park outside their house and I'd walk down.
Yeah.
To do the party, not to do the dumping.
Right.
I'm not sure-
Well, at least they won't be able to dump.
Right, although if I were you, my concern would be, are they gonna dump right there?
I don't think they'll do it. I don't think they're gonna walk down there.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
No, are they gonna dump right there at the trail end?
I don't, I cannot imagine, because it's, people who do this know this is not legal, right? The reason they do this-
People do a lot that they know isn't legal.
Is because there's nobody there to catch them, to see them.
Right.
I don't think they will bug their car on the side of the road to go and do that thing.
You never know.
It's a very strong neighborhood, and then people know what's going on.
Yeah.
You know, so, yeah, maybe one person will get away with it, but I cannot imagine-
A lot of people getting away with it.
Exactly. And I don't think anybody-
And they would be noticed if they parked right outside your house.
Absolutely, yeah.
Are there any problems with motorcycles or anything? Dirt bikes?
Hmm, rarely.
Okay.
Rarely. That hasn't, that has not been a big problem.
Um, I mean, anyone else from the audience? I know there's some of you here about this subject. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? It's okay if you, if you don't. Rick, Deb, I know you wanna ask a question.
No, I was just gonna say, who, who is the one who approves us doing that?
Us. It's us, really. We can make it a private way, is that correct?
So, because it's a CRMC right-of-way as well, didn't we go through this with Jimmy Caram's property?
Yes.
That was blocked off, and it had to be all undone because it's a CRMC right-of-way.
So can I just, I'm sorry, because we actually had a conversation with CRMC, or at the Harbor Commission. And our understanding, and from what Dave said to us, is a CRMC right-of-way does not mean a vehicular right-of-way. We are not proposing that the road be marked "private and no access."
Yeah, that's the difference.
What we're proposing is the road be foot access only. And the thing that we proposed is that there be-
The road and the parking over at Nanticoake Bridge isn't marked and designated either, and it had to be undone. So I, I'm not disagreeing with that's minor, but I think we should at least check with their legal counsel before we take an action that we would have to undo again later. Could we have in the motion pending approval through CRMC as well?
I think if you close a road like this-
Well, you gotta, yeah.
If, sorry, if you close a road like this to vehicles' traffic, I've checked the ordinance, but it'd have to be some kind of public hearing on that before we do so. So we can't do it like tonight.
Yes.
So we have to post it, advertise, but, yeah.
Denise, I mean, he is looking for some easier remedies too, on this page, like just putting some signs out there and bags. I mean, that's not-
So, the bags-
I mean, it's not going to-
You should be able to get bags in the library, the yellow bags. We provide them to anybody who does litter control. And I'm not saying, I understand the kind of content that you're picking up, and I don't know if I'd wanna be the one doing that either.
No, we should be doing that.
But to the extent that there are any kind of trash that you, you know, do want, are willing to pick up, there are litter bags available at the library. So they're, and they're fairly decent size. And we have a number of different committees that go around in pickup areas and can utilize those bags at no charge. So I don't want bag to be an issue, because they are available. I just don't know if it was ever conveyed to you that they, that they are available. But I also understand the content of what you're picking up, and I don't necessarily think that I would wanna be picking that up either.
Yeah, it's gross.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
No, I know there's other things, but I don't think putting aside "don't dump" will stop people from dumping. You know what I mean?
Agreed, agreed. The people, the people who are dumping these kind of things-
They're dumping them in other places too, where there's signs.
They're not gonna read the sign.
Yeah, there's signs all over town, "don't dump," and we have these problems, so.
I'm looking for a quick, easy, while we, while we deal with CRMC-
It's kinda like the "no hunting" sign. That's the first place they go.
It is true.
Can we at least make sure that they are given bags, number one?
Yep.
And can we request that Rick have a DPW truck go down there, say, once a week? It looks like it'll probably require the small dump truck to pick the stuff up and get it to the dumps. Because they shouldn't have to be doing this.
Have you, have you seen these pictures?
I have seen some pictures. I'm aware that there has been a litter problem. I'm not aware until tonight that there's a request to make it pedestrian only. So DPW hasn't had a lot of time to think about that. However, I would point out that as far as trash bags go, there is really no standard, there's no protocol. I certainly do what the town administrator says to do. But we get various requests for cleanup in different areas. Fogland Point, Inlet Drive, which is Two-Rod Way, Leepes, Bay Street, Weedamow, Nanticoake. There really isn't enough personnel to go around doing all this trash pickup all over the place. We can't even keep up with the ones that we are supposed to do in the summertime. There will be a parking problem if it becomes a pedestrian only.
You do think that?
They're gonna be, they're not gonna park necessarily at Rooker's. They're gonna park maybe on Sepauwet, right at the corner. And I understand the point of view of the private property owners in the area. But we have people at Leepes, at Bay Street, at Fogland Point, off of Nanticoake, who want to say, you know, "no access, no parking," et cetera, because of trash and because people go down there at night. And although there are free bags for people doing pickup, you know, whether they go down a street and pick up or a particular area, there is no standard or protocol for people to have bags every week or multiple bags every week to collect trash from people who are using public access. So that has not been established. We will do whatever the, you know, the town council directs the administrator, and he directs us. But there's going to be some problems, and they're not all going to be solved by making it pedestrian only. There's multiple areas, I've only named a few, where we get constant complaints about trash and kids playing around and, you know, parking and needles and, you know.
Is the police chief here?
No, I was hoping he'd be here. Oh, he is.
Yes.
Okay.
Patrick, you're hiding back there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You were hiding, you were hoping I'd know.
No, not at all. I was anticipating your call. Good evening. So I listened to a lot of the concerns, and there's a couple things to unpack. I can remember going down to Jack's Island years ago, and what the gentleman is saying is absolutely true. It was a notorious parking spot when I was on patrol 25 years ago. So what I can do and what I will do is direct the patrols to go down there. I, to be perfectly honest, I think some of the patrols are afraid to go down there. The reason why they're afraid, they don't recognize it as a laneway, and they don't wanna get stuck down there. So what we'll do is we'll educate some of the officers that they need to go down there a little further. But I'd also reach out to the citizens and the residents. Call us. Let us know if they see headlights down there. You don't have to leave your name. We won't go and knock on your door. We'll just say, hey, there's a car down Jack's Island, and we'll go and check 'em out. The other thing with the pedestrian access, I would say, and it is definitely a parking issue, but what I would suggest, and I'd wanna go down there first and work with the DPW director, even if we left 12 feet, so if a car couldn't go all the way down, if a car was sticking out, people could legally park there. But if they're parking there at 11 o'clock at night and there's Jersey barriers, clearly they're up to no good. So that would be something that I would ask the residents to say, hey, there's a car parked down there at 11 with flashlights, we're hearing stuff, and this way, we can go down there. But also, officers on patrol, they don't have to go down there. They're gonna see a car sticking out or a taillight sticking out, so we can check those folks out. But for tonight, and I know this is gonna be a process, I'll direct my patrols to go down there. I would ask the residents down there, if they see suspicious activity, hear suspicious activity, call us. And we will absolutely go down there. And I'll make it a point to educate our younger officers, who, they are. They're just not familiar with that.
So-
You're very welcome.
So, so what do you wanna have as a plan of action?
What you suggested-
So I know Jack's Island, and it is, it's beautiful, but you're gonna go all the way down there. And it's, it's essentially a laneway.
So where would you put the Jersey barrier?
I'd want, so this way, maybe 12 feet, 15 feet in. So this way, you could park a car, and it's not on the curve, but you can see it. So when someone's going, and then with the Jersey barriers, you're gonna have to get out of the car and walk, but you're gonna know that there's a car there. So people are not gonna be able to commit all the way in.
So would that be closing the road? Is it gonna create the same-
Partially.
Thing? So I, we'll deal with CRMC on that matter, but can I ask another really dumb question, maybe? I know that early, maybe midsummer, we've gotten some complaints that that whole laneway had grown in, and we sent the DPW in there to kinda clear it back, because it was kind of a nightmare for people to get in and out of there. Has it gotten worse since we opened it up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and that was, the trees were mutilated.
Yeah, but sometimes we have to do that when it gets so overgrown, and it's a laneway, and it's, it's an access point. We had to make it before we stopped paying damages on cars for going down.
I don't think it was overgrown. That's-
Well, I know you probably don't.
Well, somebody thought it was.
Somebody, I'm sure, did think it was.
Okay.
So can I just add one comment? And I, if any of you actually spend time there, you will realize that most of the people who go down Two-Rod Way are not from Rhode Island. Now, I know that the fact that they're, if you're from Massachusetts, out of state, you-
Totally irrelevant, it is totally irrelevant.
It's totally irrelevant. I totally understand that. But most of the people who access that road are from out of state. So we're talking about spending, tibetan tax money to maintain access for people who are primarily from out of state. And I, you know, I understand-
I know. We have the same issue at Nanticoake. It's the exact same issue.
And granules sometimes.
And granules, and a couple of others.
Did you wanna say something?
No, I mean, these are all good points. I just wanna be clear that we will reach out to CRMC. The Journal, in the last six months, has been running articles about public access, and about how. And I know Donna, this is a big thing that you're, you've been, you know, making sure that people have free access to the water.
Right.
This happens to be an access point that, you know, based on what I'm hearing, is not only my own by the town, but it's also recognized by CRMC as a public access point. So to the extent that we wanna close it in any way, you know, that's, that could cause, whether you're from Rhode Island or Massachusetts or whatever, that could cause another, another issue. But we'd have to, if we're gonna put a barrier there, we're effectively closing that road, and that would require a public hearing. We're not abandoning the road, but we're closing the road. So that would require at least a public hearing and notice to, it might even be notice to a butters, but I'm not sure about that yet.
Just another thought.
Access, right?
But you're closing the road to vehicular traffic. Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So CRMC told us that access does not entail, it doesn't say it needs to be vehicular.
Right. But we're closing it now. We, the town would be closing it to vehicular access. And so we'd have to at least let people know, you know, because otherwise, they're gonna drive down in the middle of the night, hit a barrier, you know, so that we can protect ourselves by saying, well, we had a public hearing on this, and people commented on it, so.
Yeah, we had an expert on right-of-way speak at the, at the Harbor Commission. Very knowledgeable. I guess we could ask her what, you know, what we can do and not do. The only thing I'm thinking of when you-
Was she from CRMC?
Huh?
Was she from CRMC?
Yes, yeah. She was, she was a Ben. She did a little presentation, and people could ask questions, and she's very knowledgeable about some of the things that we're concerned with. I think, Mike, you left. I'm not sure. But, yeah, my concern is that if people are still going down there, w-what are you gonna do if there's, you know, people are down there and, and there's an emergency, you can't get emergency trucks down there to, the EMT, how are they gonna get down there? They're gonna have to like run with a stretcher down? I'm not sure how that's supposed to be done.
Well, that's only if we put the barrier, but if we put signs, that's different.
If we, if we, so the suggestion that we had, because we actually had thought about that, what if you needed to either get an emergency vehicle, or if DPW needed to go down, or if the Audubon Society needed access to Jack's Island? Rather than putting a permanent barrier and put in, either put a gate that's locked that the key to the gate would be available to anyone in the town administration that, that needed it, or a chain with a, with a similar idea, so that it could be removed in an instant if necessary?
That would not block the whole road, just block it enough that a car couldn't get down. So people could still walk down there.
Still walk down.
Yeah, we've, we've run into this before though, because we'd have to give every cruiser a key,
I will say that, and no disrespect to the gentleman, when you're trying to get somewhere in an instant, it's amazing how many people don't have the key.
Right, and I've run into this.
And what I'd wanna be able to say is, you know, from the point of access to, on Sepauwet, to the farthermost point that a vehicle could get to, what's that length? And then kinda just decide, if we were gonna block it, where to block it. And to Councilor Cook's point, so if we needed to back a rescue down there, if there was a fire, if, so we're not taking somebody out there, that was there legally. That was just enjoying it, and heaven forbid they had a heart attack, or they injured themselves. So firefighters are not running up and running back. So, you know, we'd wanna take a look at the whole area if we're gonna restrict access, because obviously, you know, we want people to come to town and enjoy this, because it's beautiful. And clearly, the word has gotten out. What we wanna restrict is people that are gonna go down there and destroy it.
So, so what's the best course of action?
I think, this is just my opinion, I think we need to check with CRMC and see what we can do. And then meanwhile, the DPW director and the police chief can get, put their minds together.
Yeah, and Michael. Michael's gonna have to-
Chris and I will call CRMC.
Yeah, they'll, they'll do this, and maybe they can go down, look at it, and think of different ways that we could block that off or stop cars from going down there. But I think the most important thing is to check with CRMC before we have any public hearings, because I don't wanna go, and then they say, absolutely not. So, Chris and Mike can do that. Meanwhile, you two can put your heads together.
Yes, ma'am.
When can we, when can we-
The police chief who's hiding back there.
When can we revisit this, because it gets lost in the weeds?
Yeah, I'll put it on the agenda. You probably need it two weeks. I'll put it on the next agenda, and we can have an update.
I think the first we can do is let them have bags.
Oh, yes. And they can have bags.
Yeah. Can, can we also get in touch with the litter committee? We have a litter committee, right?
I personally think, these pitches, I don't know, you can't put some of these things in bags.
No, no.
So I think that the, our town vehicles need to at least check down there. Maybe not weekly, but by week, do something different, but-
I'll talk to Rick about that.
Because if you look at, you're not putting pillows and chairs and all this stuff in bags.
Well, they could also call them down and let them know they have enough. It may work as well, they have to get it.
But, you know, my concern is-
They may not know, they may not know.
So where would they get the bags?
If it's dumped back in, they're not necessarily gonna know what's back there.
Right.
They did this because they wanna help.
So where would they get the bags?
The library.
And I just wanna emphasize again, please, 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 call us. You're being great citizens by going down there and picking this stuff up. But you'd be, you'd be surprised how we can trace, especially some of the trash that was dumped down there. The only part of the way that this is gonna stop is we need to make an example out of somebody. Meaning that we need to charge somebody. Someone knows about this little spot. So when you see it, we'll work with you, but call us, please call us. when you see it, we'll work with you. But call us, please call us, so we can investigate this stuff.
Chief, I really appreciate.
Yeah, thank you.
Your words. The reality is, is that if you look, we've had, we've filed police reports. And we've been told that unless there's some, some.
Something going on.
Somebody has it, has their name in the bag.
Sure.
There's nothing that you guys can do.
Well, with all respect to the people that you've spoken to, you haven't spoken to me, please call us.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There was a gentleman in the audience that wants to speak too. Yeah, Rick, go ahead.
Just two things to add. I have been down there because I have had reports that, you know, there's trash down there. A lot of people during the day are enjoying themselves down there, and they're obeying the laws. And I understand that private residents that have property right around there, just like many areas in town, want to curtail the use. I understand that. But there's a lot of people down there obeying the law, using it during the day. So.
Probably not at midnight.
Yes, but to, to block it off has going to create more problems. And as everybody knows, because you, you know, come from here, walking down Sepauet from Rookers parking lot.
Yep.
Down Sepauet is not a healthy thing to be doing. People walk there all the time. But you're going to be adding foot traffic, and that's going to have some headaches added to, to that issue also.
So how would you propose solving this problem? If you, if you had to live there and deal with this, since the town, until now, we have not had any.
I just want to say, please don't put the DPW Director.
Okay, no, I understand. But I, I think that we have to also maybe think a little differently than we have so far. It's certainly that the town has not, until now, has not put any, has not been helping us with this, with this problem. And what we're proposing is a solution that actually may solve this problem without blocking people's access to the water.
I do have to tell you that, and I think somebody alluded to it, this is not just you that are having problems.
Oh, no, I totally understand.
It's all over town.
I, I understand.
And a lot of people want to do the same thing. We have to be careful.
I get it.
On what we do and how we handle it.
I understand.
Because there's a lot of people that would like to make their vote private, so that people don't go down there and do drugs. And so I think increased police patrol, for now, anyway. Rick, you'll send somebody down there every once in a while to help pick up the trash, please.
Yep, we can do that.
And I, I do have to reiterate, I've been on the council for 10 years. This is the first time it's come in front of me. So maybe that's what should have happened a long time ago.
Yeah.
But we will do our best to take care of this. And I can understand.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Why this is terribly annoying. I would not like this at all. Mike?
Just a, a thought, and it may not be workable, but I'm looking at the map of the Wildlife Refuge down to the drive. I'm wondering if we could have a conversation with the Audubon Society, if we're looking at maintaining, having a place to park, but also maintaining access down there by pedestrians, cutting a trail right along the road there. So people can walk from the parking area down that way, if they so desire. And I don't think there's a trail along the road. Yeah.
If you, there's other people waiting.
But they could easily do that. All right.
The, the, one thing I would say, along with Mike just said, and this is the case in many areas, very little of that is town of Tiverton. It becomes our headache. But the vast majority of the area there is either state of Rhode Island, Audubon, or private property. The town actually only has jurisdiction over that thin right-of-way to the, you know, the tide mark. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sally?
Yes, I'll be very quick. Sally Black, Broadview Drive, right in Anna Corrits. We have those problems there, too. I can attest to what the chief said. 25 years ago, 30 years ago, my kids were there. And let me tell you something. When the police cars showed up, and they ended up in the back of there, having to call us to come pick them up at the police station, that ended very quickly. And also, the, believe it or not, the word travels to Fall River. Because if they cross state lines and they get into trouble down there, this, it's amazing. It stopped right away, because they used to go there and party. And all of a sudden, you get the call, Mrs. Black. I'm like, what? Oh, yeah. Come get your son.
Her kids, yeah.
And then the other one becomes a police officer. So he knows how to get down and get those kids, right? Thank you very much. That's an immediate, you know, because I know this can be a process with private and public, but the most immediate thing you can do, in my opinion.
Sally, I like your mask.
David Smith, 377 Sepauet. I abut Jack's Island on the waterside.
Okay.
And so Peter and Kathy see everyone come down past their house. And then they take all their gear, fishing, camping, coolers, chairs, full encampment gear, and they walk all the way out to the point of Jack's Point to go fishing. And we see them set up camp out there. I'm the only one that can see them, because I'm the only home right there. They'll set up out front there at 5:00 in the morning. And sometimes they're there for two or three days. They get their tents set up, and, and then I'll go down with my tractor, after the next flood tide, to my beach, and start loading the abandoned coolers, and the lounge chairs, and the bits of debris that just come washing off Jack's Island to our place, to our beach. So this is a point that if you're going to approach CRMC or the Audubon, saying, okay, the public's disrespecting your property, and now all that gear wouldn't be able to make it out to Jack's Island if it was just pedestrian access. But this is the stuff that, you know, they'll come out there, they'll spend the whole day, and then they just leave it there. And, you know, I, I see it going by in the boat, and there'll be lounge chairs out there, and leftover fishing rods, and you're just like, okay. And then the next flood tide, I have to pick it up. So it's, it's more than just their problem. Now it becomes a save the bay problem when all sorts of stuff is floating in the water. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so.
I just want to say, if this continues to be a problem, please come before us. In six months from now, if we need to revisit this again, you can be put on the agenda, and we can revisit this. So.
Well, I'm going to put it on. I'll put it on for an update, net, two weeks from now.
So we're, we're going to be away that Monday 20th? I don't know if you need us in person?
No, because what we're going to talk about is what CRMC is saying we can do. And then we have to make a plan. Hopefully, the DPW and the police will have some sort of suggestions. Meanwhile, DPW will, will go down there. Police will go down there more often. If you don't notice this happening, please call us.
I'll give you a call after that council meeting, to let you know where we are.
Really appreciate it.
And my number is online, so call me. Everyone calls me, so call me.
The woman behind, Peter wanted to talk.
Yep.
Elizabeth Jackson, 393 Sepauet. I love the idea, because parking is such a problem. I walk between Rookers and Jack's Island. I go inland. I don't walk on the road. So there is a possibility of putting a pathway through there. And I do it all the time, just because, without a trail. So, so I think that is a really good suggestion.
We'd have to have the Audubon Society agree to it.
Yeah, but I think if whoever's going through that.
And we may want to reach out to the Audubon Society, too.
We will.
To see if they have some.
So if I could maybe just add, because I, Brian James and we have talked to the Audubon Society. They are as fed up with this problem as we are. They actually, I think I'm quoting the gentleman that we spoke to, that tired of having Jack's Island be their, be a latrine.
Well, that's what Donna was just.
And, and I think they might be, I, I don't, I can't speak for them, obviously, but they might be open to the idea of a trail, cutting a trail from the Rooker parking area through to Jack's Island.
Brian also knows how to contact me, so he can do that also. But we'll call the Audubon Society also. So we'll have an update.
I'll be here at the next.
Yeah, and it's probably going to be several meetings, because with that update, then we'll make some kind of a plan. The public hearing, quite honestly, won't probably be for a month or so.
Yeah.
Or two months from now. But meanwhile, we'll try to take care of it.
Thank you. We really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thanks to all of you. I didn't, does any other council want to talk? Because I saw about this. Because I saw Joe's hearing.
All I was going to say was, at a public hearing, we get a lot of different ideas, so that would probably be helpful, too.
That would be helpful, too. Deb, did you want to? No?
No.
Okay. I just did monologue. Have the council think I was ignoring them, but I was trying to get the people in the audience. Yeah, well, I try not to ignore you, Joe. It's hard to ignore you, Joe.
He dressed like that.
Yeah, dressed like that. He's very dressed up today.
Roll for his throwman.
That was for me. That was. All right. Council President Di Madere's discussion and possible vote regarding allocation of casino gaming revenue as per Tiverton Code of Order in Section 2-107. D1, review of school committees' vote on 2021 casino gaming revenue capital request. And D2 is review of total allocation for schools and towns to this point, and further adjustments to allocations. Derry, would you like to come to the front?
Sure.
So you had a meeting? I did watch this portion of it.
Yep, we had a meeting. So first of all, thanks. We're really appreciative of all the collaboration we've been able to achieve through this process. It's the first time, hopefully not the last time, we'll be sort of having these discussions. And I think we're all sort of still learning how to do it. But I think you have in your hands, from Mrs. Jabot, sort of, kind of a breakdown of where we were last time, where there was 1.3 million expenditures approved at the last meeting, possibly going up to 2 million, leaving a balance of 682. And in our meeting last time, we sort of were, or our meeting subsequent to that, the school committees' meeting subsequent to that, we talked about various priorities. And we passed two resolutions, but I guess the best way I can put this, what it comes down to is what you guys think is the most appropriate use as the ultimate allocating body. We off, what we offer for you is that there are lots of different priorities. We have a $25 million, five-year capital plan. One of the things we had talked about was the media center. If you wanted to partner with us with that, we could probably use some ESTR money to bring funding for that. Potentially using a $60,000 for a graphics art lab. And then the balance would be for additional work to the bathrooms, or, if you would like, or if it's the council's pleasure, to use all of the 682.5 to continue renovation of the bathrooms. So just to kind of gloss that a little bit, where are we with that? So there's two bathrooms in each school, a male and a female, and middle school and the high school, that have been done in the last 12 to 24 months. There remain at least three pairs of bathrooms in the high school, and another pair of bathrooms in the high school that are, that is actually so decommissioned that it's probably not viable.
So you're not even going to do that one?
Well, so, so there is a difference between sort of what's there in terms of the architecture of the building, and what that cost would be, and what it would need to serve the needs of the students when they're in school, the town when they're using the building for different types of events, or should it happen, the emergency shelter. So.
So which bathroom in the high school is out of decommissioned?
The one next to the guidance department.
Oh. Not the one in the teachers' lot?
No, 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 no.
Not the teachers' lot?
No, the staff bathrooms are completely separate and are functional enough that they're not even addressed.
So one near the guidance. Okay.
Yeah.
I think I know which one you mean.
Doing history and guidance?
Yes, I know exactly which one you mean.
I can't believe that I know it. But.
Well, I know, well, I was on the school committee for eight years, so yeah, I do.
I just want to clarify guidance, because guidance used to be, when you went in the door, it was on your left. Now it's on the right, correct?
I absolutely know where it is. Yeah. I was there for that building committee.
It's quite a sight to see, if you would like to come see that bathroom. But be that as it may.
But the ones further down in the math history section.
So if you go, if you go to the stairwell.
Yep.
Okay, in the, the back of the building, there's basically a set of bathrooms on each floor. That, with the bathroom adjacent to the auditorium, would sort of.
But that one's already done.
That's already done.
So there's three pairs remaining at the high school.
Yes.
And one of those pairs is on the basement level?
Yes.
Yes. But then there's the gym, and the locker rooms, and the bathrooms.
Right. And that's not covered in any of this.
Okay. I was pretty appalled to hear a couple of things I heard, that visiting teams won't even use our locker rooms, that our kids, and parents have called me.
Right.
Our kids don't even want to be in there. And I think that that should be a priority also. But that's just my opinion. Because I've been in that locker room during election season, when I've been out at the polls, and I've used that bathroom. And I couldn't believe how much that's deteriorated since I've been on the school committee.
The building is 60 years old. Well, no, not 60, 66.
But I, I feel we should almost be embarrassed that other towns are not comfortable going in those areas. And that doesn't say a lot for Tiverton. So that, that really was something that struck me, that these bathrooms.
Right.
These locker bathrooms, that the media center is more important than these locker bathrooms. And that really got to me that night. And I'll be completely honest with you. Because I think it's embarrassing to Tiverton, it's embarrassing to all of us, the visiting teams, think that our bathrooms are so gross, that they won't go in there. And I've had coaches say that when they're there, they won't take showers in there either. And I, I'm kind of flabbergasted that that's not one of your biggest priorities right now.
I think it's all a big priority.
But the media center out-trumped this, and that's what really shocks me. And, but that's just my opinion, and I'm going to be really honest with you.
Okay.
But that really shocked me, that this is a safety issue. This is, this is, the, this is just horrible to me. And for this not to out-trump the media center, really disturbed me, and it still does. But I also would like to say, and I'll let you all talk, too, the ones that voted for this ordinance, put their neck out in the line for this, and everybody knows that. We were criticized by school people, non-school people. All kinds of people felt that the casino money should have gone into the general fund. I voted twice to do this on the, on the last council and this council. And we, and I want to make it clear, I don't want to be the budget committee. I don't want to do the budget committee's job. We decided, and through many discussions, that this money was for capital expenses that were put off for so many years, that have been on our lists, our lists and your lists, for so many years, that have just been pushed down the road. Because we couldn't afford it, because we couldn't tax, and because, quite frankly, other budgets got rid of it. So we thought that if we got some of this done, this stuff that is, now, I've been to budget committees for, God, 10 years as a town counselor, 10 years as a school committee member. And there's a lot of things that have been put off, and shame on us for that. And there's a lot of budget committee members that criticize us because these things are done, but we're not getting the money for it. This was for one-time capital expenses, capital expenses that were put off. The media center in all my years were never mentioned. It was not on lists. I understand that it's on a new list now. That's okay. But we've got many things to worry about, and not only you guys, but also us. Now, I also have to say something. Me, Mike, Chris, you, and the superintendent were present at a meeting, which the town council knew about and was totally approved. Chris, I think that Chris could have spent more money. But during the discussion, we talked.
Oh, I can spend more money.
Right. And he still can. And there's priorities that we put off. But during that discussion, when we talked about the bathrooms, that's when Chris came to me and said, if they really need to get that done, we can give them more money. Because we can allocate money other places and put off our. we can give them more money, because we can allocate money other places and put off our needs for next year. And I left that meeting thinking that's what was going to happen. I also left that meeting with a list given to me by the superintendent of different things that needed to be done, and the media center was never on there as a discussion. Chris could have spent more money, of course he could. We have a lot of, the DPW have 100 things they need, and it's also safety, safety issues. Stuff that we have asked for the budget committee and was put off. It bothers me that you guys put the media center ahead of the bathrooms. I'm not going to kid you, just my opinion. We have $682,000 left. Chris, when he proposed this to all of us, thought you were going to do the bathrooms. I feel that Chris has other, other priorities that he could bring forward to us. I almost feel, and I don't know if I have the votes for it, but I feel that the 682 should go back to the drawing board. I think the school committee should come to us with priorities again. Chris should come to us with more priorities, and then we'll choose. I, we had that meeting, shame on me. But I suggested this meeting with you so that we could be unified and so that it would show that the town and the schools were working together. Leaving that meeting, we shook hands, said we were going to do this again. And I felt that after that meeting, we were blindsided by other things. And I think that should have been discussed at this meeting, because then Chris would have had the right to say, well, if they want the media center, then I could have bought it after buying. And I think that that's what needed to be done. I think the media center is not a safety issue. I think bathrooms that kids have to go into that are disgusting is an issue. I think locker rooms that people won't take showers in, and it's an embarrassment to Tivon that other communities won't use those showers is an issue. And that's all, and I know I'm on a soapbox, but I felt I needed to say that. I will tell you, I will never do a private meeting again, because there's a lot of he said, she said stuff that's going on right now. And the next time that we have to discuss this, we'll do it as a committee, so that the whole town council can hear what happened. And so there isn't like a misunderstanding. Would anybody else like to speak? Donna?
I do. I always look at things in a way that there's needs and there's wants. And the bathroom is a real need. And if we can do more with bathrooms, then so be it. But the wants are a graphic lab and a media center. Not that I'm against it, but the bathrooms are a need. Just like you might need a roof, but you're going to go put a swimming pool in or something. Not that any of these things are a swimming pool. But I'm just, and some people do do that. But the bathrooms are a real need. And I also heard that a friend's daughter won't go to the bathroom. She'd go to some bathroom that's acceptable to her way far away. I'm not sure what bathroom it is she was talking about, but they're not going to a bathroom near them. They're going, they pick a bathroom that they go to because it's, it's not as messy or it's not as horrible. I'm, I'm not sure. But the locker rooms, I don't think anything's been done since I graduated in 69. They were brand new. But, and it was the latest, but the thing is, when things get old and you're dealing with water and stuff, people, this is gross, but you can get fungal infections and stuff because things are broken and they're not sanitized correctly, because it's old. And stuff gets in the crevices and you can't, you can't get rid of it. And then all of a sudden, the children are getting some type of foot problem or something because they're taking a shower. Now, what I'm going to say is that I'm against the way this is being done. So I'm going to vote no on all of it. It has nothing to do with the need. I just think that people should have a say about how the money's being done in the FTR. So I'm going to vote no, because I don't agree with the whole process. Thank you.
Joe?
Yeah, Matt, my feeling is, we have department heads, they come to us with recommendations. They know what they need. I think the school committee came with their recommendations, what they feel is important. I think we should at least listen to what they have to say. My feeling.
So I'm going to say, we voted and we approved a list last meeting. We said up to 2 million. And it, there was some leftover money. Now, there was discussion at the school committee about us not needing all of the bathrooms. So when you say like six bathrooms at the high school, are those the one, are those all the bathrooms? Not the bathrooms in the locker room, but the non-locker room bathrooms?
So I guess the way to think about it is the bathrooms which are currently functional and used by students. So there is basically four pairs. So think about it as pairs. There are three adjacent to the stairwell on each floor. And then there's one next to the auditorium and the gyms. So that's.
The ones near the gyms have been done?
The one adjacent to the auditorium and the gyms are the ones that have been done already.
So those, those.
So you've got essentially six bathrooms in the high school that would make it functional for the student body.
Six more?
Two, so.
See, you totally confused me.
All right, so.
So there's two pairs done.
Two paired, one pair, one pair done in the high school, we're just talking about the high school. So one pair at each school, okay? One pair at the high, and so I'll try and be consistent and refer to pairs.
Okay. So how many pairs at the high school?
So three pairs left to do to make the school very functional so that students aren't migrating to the bathroom that they find most, you know, usable from an aesthetic point of view, or even more than that. And then there is one pair that is probably not salvageable. What happens to that, I don't know. So that's, so that's the high school. In the middle school, there is one pair that has been done. And there is, I believe, four more pair that could be done in order to make it a more functional bathroom, or a school.
So we need to do seven pairs total?
Seven pairs total. Now, now.
Not counting the locker?
And that's not counting the locker room, that's not counting locker room. I haven't been in the locker room at the middle, actually, I have been in the locker room in the middle school that I haven't been in recently.
That's not bad.
It's, it's not too bad. It's, you know, the building's.
Well, it's not like the high school.
It's, yeah, it's a 10, it's 10 years.
10 years younger.
Younger and probably not the intensity of use as the high school has, et cetera, et cetera. Just to, to address that, the locker room from the estimate from our five-year capital plan is, I believe, $600,000. I'm just sort of fumbling around looking at that, yeah.
And that's bathrooms in, that's like the gutting the whole thing.
So, you know, anybody who's ever done any kind of home renovation knows how these things go when you start talking plumbing, but that's the estimate right now, yeah.
And that's both locker rooms.
Yeah.
So, because when you think about the high school, the high school was built and opened and run for, for 10 years as a junior, senior high school.
Right.
There were six class, six classes of students.
We went there.
We went there, right? There were approximately 200 students per class. We're talking over 1,000 students walking those halls. So there was a different need at that time. And as my kids say, fun fact, it was so crowded, my seventh grade year, our seventh grade year, my homeroom was the cafeteria. I had, not hers. I was at the end of the alphabet. I had a great view of that dishwasher.
Yeah, well, that's a whole other story. So.
The dishwasher, we hopefully will replace it.
To sort of bring this back a little bit, you know, and, and sort of talking about the age of the buildings and that we haven't been able to keep them up, at least parts of them. So when we did the facility study in 2013 or 14, you know, the comment of the architects was, the bones are good, try and protect your asset. And that's why we did the roofing and the HVAC and the draft walls and the lights and the ceiling tiles. So this is sort of the next phase of that, I suppose. And if you look at, so every year, the, we're not in Department of Education, not every year, I think it's every two years, does a schoolhouse report card, and they kind of use the age of the buildings and the square footage, and they sort of say, this is what we know you've done, this is where you need to, you know, this is how much money you may need to expend to bring your schools or protect that asset. We were sort of in the $40 million range a couple of years ago. But the cost of a new high school is upwards of $200 million. So, so this is sort of a good thing to do. And just to speak to, you know, we will gladly accept what is doable. I don't know how far it will ultimately go for all of those bathrooms. We view this as a, everything is a priority, everything is a priority. We just got our forecast scores, education is a priority. And you guys all know that. I'm not disputing that you don't.
Yeah, exactly, but this casino money.
I understand. No, and I understand. And, and I'll have to say, I, I did not have as acute an understanding of should be capital that has been neglected and the sort of.
We said it a lot, but that doesn't mean you've watched our meetings.
You, you should hear what I say to my kids and what they don't understand, so.
No, you have to say it 10 times before maybe they hear.
No, my next question.
Sign language or something.
We obviously can't do all the bathrooms and the lockers, but I would hope, because we don't know what's going to happen with the casino money next year, because we have to figure that out. There will be a portion for capital, like, you know, we'll assume that, or that's what some of us would like. Maybe we could do a locker room next year or two locker, I don't know if it would be two locker rooms depending on what the money is. But maybe we could work on that also, because just like you said, a roof can leak. When you go into those, that gym, you, gym locker rooms, you don't know what's going on underneath there. There could be mold under that floor. Think about it, that, that's old and that shower.
Think about it.
Yeah, I don't want to think about it either. So that is a safety issue. That is something that really we should address.
Yeah, I mean, if I had my brothers, I would say, get those salvageable, those unsalvageable bathrooms and do something else with them. I'm afraid that if we start to kind of knock down walls of what we will find.
And if we're not using them as bathrooms at this point, maybe repurposing for, for something else.
Especially that one.
That would be a lot less expensive, and maybe we can recognize some more money. I agree with Joe. The, the school committee knows what they need. And I totally, and I said this to you at the school committee meeting, I went into that meeting feeling that we, bathrooms, bathrooms, we need to do the bathrooms. Because I sat on the, the budget committee for so many years and the bathrooms were always an issue. We kept kicking that can down the road. But listening to the print shop that we're tuitioning kids out of district, and if we brought in like 60,000, I listened to you too.
No, 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 no.
So if, if we did 60,000 for the graphic arts lab and we had five students who we didn't tuition out, we could pay for it in a year. It's probably not going to happen, but, you know, if you do the math, a couple of years, we could pay that out. I know that the superintendent wants to increase the graduation rate. And in all reality, the kids who are college-bound, they're going to graduate. But it's the other kids, like, how do we engage those other kids who are not book learners, who really need to be hands-on? How do we give them skills that they can take into, into their adult lives? And I think looking at a graphics art lab, something to that effect, it's, it's a pretty inexpensive fix for a space we already have. We already have teachers who can do this. My understanding is there would not be much more cost to add to that. And the media center, I've heard from a lot of people, some of my own family. We have a media center that was built in the six, we have a library that was built in the 60s. And we are so technologically behind. You know, I think that we showed during the pandemic, we were doing Zoom meetings. Some of our own committees couldn't do them, because they couldn't figure out how to get onto, onto Zoom. They couldn't figure out how to share a screen. They couldn't email, they, you know, the committees couldn't do it, the residents couldn't do it. This is the world that we live in. We need to give these kids marketable skills. So I do support those two items and would like to at least look at them and at least bring them up for discussion. The fact that the school committee voted to do at least part of the, the money toward the media center and look for money elsewhere, I think that shows your commitment to it.
Yeah, I think that if we had any favorability, we would use that towards that as well as, it, it is an ideal. So, you know, one of the reasons why, kind of looking at it as a partnership between, you know, the, the town of Tivon, broadly speaking, all of us, and and using the ESSR money is that it's sort of, ESSR money has got very specific restriction, not restrictions, but they're defined categories of use. And it would go very specifically towards learning loss. So, and, yeah, so that's, that's really the only thing, is that it, it shows a nice participative partnership, I guess.
And, and, yeah, and I think.
But we will take whatever you give us.
And Dr. Craven talked about having little areas in the media center. And as I thought about it more, and you all know I work in healthcare, with the pandemic, people have, mental health issues are so up in the front for us right now, because people did not have their resources, they did not have their specialists to go to. They didn't have their family and friends to be talking to. So there's a lot of people who just need a lot more TLC right now. And I can appreciate, we're seeing it at the hospitals, you're seeing it in the schools. The kids need more. They need that kind of, of environment so they can feel comfortable and safe too. I'm not saying that the bathrooms aren't important, because I yelled and screamed about those for many years. But maybe there's room for a little bit of both and that's, that's what my thoughts are.
What I was just, why I went, because I forgot to mention, we get more of a reimbursement for the bathrooms.
Yeah.
We can, we'll probably get like 30%.
So.
And then that would go into, what we're hoping.
Yeah.
35.
So.
What we're hoping to be, go right back into.
And, and I said that too, but Amy did remind us, we don't see that for a whole year.
Yeah, I know, I know, Joe, I know.
I know, and, and, you know, you could say, okay, the.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, you can, you can say both. You can say that the bathrooms have been there since the 60s. They're, they'll be there, you know, some, to some point into the 20s. The library's been there since the 60s. There are, there are, you know, we can try different financing ideas, and this was one that, you know, is your purview.
So when we did the bathrooms, like, say at the high school, because I could visualize that better, we did two at the same time, so we had to close both of those at the same time?
So I believe those were done over the summer. And how you, you know, you, this is the details that, you know, a contractor would tell you. But I would imagine that you would close each bathroom sequentially. Although the.
During the summer or over the school year or?
Well, I know, and I'm getting way out of my land, obviously.
We need a plumber in the audience for this.
I know enough to know that the plumbing has got to be under net, because they're all sort of on top of each other there, so.
So because they were guarded, they were closed.
Yeah.
You know, so they, the kids had to go somewhere else to.
Yeah, we saw them.
Right, so, so you can't do those.
They had other bathrooms to go.
So you can't.
Close three down.
You can't do them all at once.
All right, I'm going to.
So maybe it makes more sense to spread that.
I think I have people waiting for a second, but Jay, do you want to say something? Sure you do.
Yeah, so I, I've been thinking about this a lot, and I haven't thought about much else for the past two weeks. So one thing that strikes me is we had a group get-together with the school committee, with you, Dr. Larkin, with the superintendent, came up with a list. At that, when that list was first made up, bathrooms were a priority, no doubt about it.
They still are, please.
And then, as I understand it, the town administrator added $700,000 to the pot. And all of a sudden, the remaining bathrooms weren't a priority. Now, during my four years on the budget committee and my year here, bathrooms have always been a priority. As a matter of fact, they were pretty much top of the list. I have to admit that I totally spaced out the two that are associated with the gym. I have to admit that I totally spaced out the two that are associated with the gym. I thought about all the other ones, but I didn't think about those until I got my COVID shot and went into one of them.
Yeah.
And then you caught a disease.
Yeah, I should have gotten, not got COVID.
Then you weren't worried about COVID anymore.
They were absolutely disgusting, and I can't imagine anybody ever wanted to use them. Now, I fully understand that the media center is important and that the print shop, computer lab idea is important. But I also know that one of the first things to go in any organization when you need to find cash is you do away with maintenance. Because you figure it's going to take care of itself. It sort of hides in the corner, and unless it blows up, it's not noticeable. And that's what we've been doing for decades around here. We, we just keep on putting off maintenance. This is the year that we've, we've taken the bull by the horns and say, no, we're not going to give up all our maintenance. We're going to do it. As I mentioned, that, you know, we're going to get, who knows, well, almost guaranteed 35% back as a rebate from the state for safety items. I think we can pretty much say bathrooms will be that. We won't get it for a year, but we will get it. And we can put that in an account to take care of some of these other needs. So where I am right now is, I really like to see these bathrooms get done, or at least more than was originally anticipated. And then if we have a little bit left, maybe kick it into one of these other two projects. The media center may very well turn out to be a two-year project.
Good value, Bobby. And that, you know, that's.
As could the two.
I don't think that the school committee is at all far from where you are. I, you know, this is why we brought it back as two sort of votes. So.
Yeah, so, I mean, we, we, you know, we don't have to do any one of, well, a bathroom, obviously, you have to do it soup to nuts and be done. But these other things, you know, we could, you know, do it in sections. And still get it done, but it, it might just take a year or two or even three. Who knows?
Yep.
And I'm sort of in favor of that approach, but the maintenance, we just can't. As you said, the buildings have good bones. Well, the bones will rot if we don't take care of them.
Absolutely.
Since July, I've been opposed to the ordinance and to the allegation of these funds by the town council. I'm not going to get into the middle of whether we should do the bathrooms, media center. I appreciate members of your committee reaching out to me to educate me regarding this issue. I do support the multimedia center, the agriculture lab, and the greenhouse. I wish I was on the budget committee so I could advocate for you guys, because I really do think that. But I have to stay consistent with my vote. And I think I'm probably just going to abstain from votes recounting this issue here on out, because I just don't feel like we have the right to do this. So. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'll try to speak as clearly as I can. I have some things going on that block my nose a bit. But it's not contagious.
It's not.
It's not. It's not contagious.
I'm immunized. Vaccinated, actually. I'm not going to do that.
So, first and foremost, as others have said, I think the media center is a great idea. I think the hydroponics could be a good idea. I think the graphic design could be a good idea. I don't have enough information on all of them to make a decision on those, for one thing. Secondly, I am a firm believer that the purpose of this money is not for those additional things. Everything you do as a school committee, and Peter and his staff do, is related to education. Fixing bathrooms is related to education. Fixing the dishwasher is related to education. Is it the stuff that people see all the time? No. But sometimes those nuts and bolts are just as, maybe more important than the stuff that you can take the media cameras around to and, and show them. So, I, as I said to you today, and to Peter, you know, I am happy to support you going forward with those, those projects, not with this money. I don't see this money as for that purpose. And I do kind of agree on the analogy I used with you today, Jerry, with council president, in that we had an understanding from, from the meeting where, you know, we had with the four, five of us, I guess, that, you know, you walked away thinking you get 1.3, and then, you know, Chris sharpened his pencil and said, okay, we know they have those needs. Can we give them more money, and up to 2 million? And my analogy is, it's like when I was in college, if my parents offered me $10,000 to buy a car so I could get back and forth to school, which was four hours away. And I said, great, thank you. And I hadn't purchased a car yet, and they said, by the way, we're going to give you $5,000 for the vehicle expenses. And rather than use it for that, I go out and buy a nicer car. That's not what they wanted. That wasn't their intent. And that wasn't at least my intent in the votes that we had, and I think for, for many of us, that wasn't our intent. The other piece is, and I was just doing the back of the envelope math, and, you know, we've thrown around different reimbursement rates, and I, and I know that reimbursements lag in terms of time. But for this 2 million dollars, assuming that the 2 million dollars does come to the school committee, you're going to get anywhere from 500,000 to 800,000 in reimbursements. So I think part of that is looking at and timing things out, especially with these bigger projects. The smaller ones, like purchasing the, the dishwasher and those things, you know, obviously, those are pretty quick, low-hanging fruits. But to time these things out, to say, okay, well, you know, we want to spend this money, this much now. We want to spend this total amount now. Here's how we're going to spend it, so that next time around, when it comes back, we want to look at other things. And maybe further down the road, and I understand the media center and the graphics lab, and maybe the hydro, I'm not sure, are in your new five-year plan, which we've not seen yet. So maybe at some further point down the road, we can consider that with more flesh on the bones. I don't think there's enough flesh on the bones, and I believe that we have some higher priorities that have already been discussed, and I'm not going to continue to remind you of those. So I, again, so I, I am happy to consider alternatives outside of the media center, the graphics, and the hydro. And I know you pulled the hydro anyway, but.
Okay, so.
Oh, can I just add one thing?
Of course.
Regardless of how this ends, in terms of what money goes where, and I think we all agree, while this has been a difficult start with using this money, I think we all need to show that we're working together. And that I would not want anything to come out of this as an us versus them type situation. You know, we're, we're providing, and in good faith, having these conversations about what's best for the town as a whole. And for me, the town isn't the school and the town side. Yes, we have to look at it from a ledger perspective, but we're a town. And what we're doing here is trying to be supportive of a big part of the town. And I think that's the messaging that everybody hopefully will go away from the final decision with, regardless of what the outcome is in terms of the items.
So, we already gave you, correct me if I'm wrong, we already gave you money for four at each school. So.
Right.
Two pairs.
Two pairs at each school.
Two pairs. Well, it gets confusing. No. Yeah, so it's four, so it's two pairs at each school, and that costs 850, approximately.
Approximately.
Okay, so if we did eight at each school, four pairs.
Yeah.
Okay. Then we double that.
But you only have.
Yeah, so going up to 2 million probably isn't going to do all of it.
Do the whole thing. No. It's going to do some. It's going to do more than four pairs, but two pairs. I, I'm so confused with bathrooms right now. Yeah, they're 106. Yes.
Well, then, obviously, you need to go out to bid and figure it out, but you need to prioritize the ones you need.
Chris brought up at the meeting, the, the five of us had, when you have a contractor in a building already there getting supplies, work minority there, it's cheaper. They're doing it in peace.
We would hope, but, um, you know, we'll see what that actually turns out.
See if that happens. But Chris did suggest that that, that could, that could happen.
So we would go out to bid. We would use one contractor.
And see what happens.
And see what happens. Just to, sort of, by way of illustration or kind of information as well, when we did the two at each school, we got an initial bid that was like crazy. And we said, no, that's not going to work. And then we went back. So.
Yeah, that, that happens.
So can I just ask, when were those bids done? Like, pre-COVID? Just because that really makes a big difference.
Uh, so we don't have any bids per se for these bathrooms.
I meant these like estimates.
So this was done over the summer by our architect, RBG.
Okay, so that's, so that's, so that's, that's reasonable.
Good faith estimate that is based on, you know, some insight, but it's, it's not something that.
When they did the previous ones, did they pretty much come within the budgeted amount, or did you go?
No, they came within the budgeted amount.
Pretty close.
So at this point, I, I was going to entertain a motion, but.
Okay, I was just going to ask, is there anything that we can do in-house to save money? Like, I know there are some custodians that are carpenters, or, you know, are there any that are plumbers that can do things to help defray some of the cost? Or no, is that totally?
Yeah, I, I think that's what we've been doing for 50-something years.
Right.
It's been a problem.
Yeah. Well, it's gotten us 55 years.
I mean, they're not real plumber. Like, that's.
Well, I know.
Well, is that awful?
Let's just say, we have, you know, so, so the more, the amazing thing we should all sort of marvel at is that, you know, those bathrooms are still functional after 55 years.
Yes, exactly. Because me and Debbie.
God only knows. Well, you guys were, I'm sure, gentle in your use, but most kids are not, and so, you know.
So the only thing I would suggest is in the bid specs that you put out, any of the brass fittings and copper fittings are left for the department to dispose of on its own, because it's in substantial monies.
Yeah.
I did that when I renovated the AG's office, and it's a substantial amount of money that we saved. All we had to do is take it to the scrapyard. We didn't have to take it.
Now they're using all plastic connections and hoses.
Back then, it was all brass. But yeah, that should all be left on for your people to get disposed of.
Yep.
At this point, does someone want to make a motion?
Can I make a motion? For 250,000 for the media center, 60,000 for the graphic arts lab, and 372, 500 for the bathrooms.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Two. Against? Four.
Abstain.
Abstain. So motion fails. Anyone else would like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we provide the school committee with an additional 682,500 for the purposes of renovating as many of the bathrooms and door locker rooms as possible.
Do I have a second to that motion? No. I'll second that motion. All those in favor? Three. Against? Three opposed, and yours, succeeding. Motion fails.
Okay, $60,000 for graphics art lab, 622, 5 for bathrooms.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Joe, what do you do?
Abstain.
Motion fails. I, I can make my motion, but.
So I'm going to speak on behalf of the school committee and myself. I would ask for one of you to make a motion to allocate the remainder of the 2 million dollars to the bathrooms. That would have the full support of the school committee and will accept it at this meeting.
That's what, that's what Mike made.
So moved.
I already made that, and it failed.
So I just have to reconsider.
Can you reconsider?
Whoever voted against.
It's a tie, right?
No, that was.
No.
No.
So whoever voted.
No, was that a tie?
Prevailing side was the.
Was it 3-3-1?
So does somebody?
Abstention is a no vote.
So does somebody who, who voted no have to make the motion?
Yes.
All right, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have to say the motion first.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
It's a motion to reconsider.
To reconsider the balance of the 2 million.
No, 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 it's just reconsider the vote. That's all it is. Just to reconsider.
Reconsider the vote.
So just to reconsider the vote.
Okay, I'll make the motion to reconsider the vote.
Yes.
Just to be clear, it's not the final vote. It's just saying we're going to bring that back before us. Right. And I'll second it.
So motion may.
Which vote are we reconsidering?
We're reconsidering Mike's motion.
Which was?
Which was the bathrooms.
The 682 for the bathrooms.
But the only thing you're doing right now is just voting whether or not you're going to reconsider.
You're basically vacating the failed motion.
Exactly, and then you will have a, and then you'll have to go around the motion again.
Jesus Christ, this didn't have to be this.
You understand that?
I do.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to reconsider. Joe, Joe second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? To reconsider.
One, two, three, four, five.
Opposed?
Opposed? Abstain. Okay, so now Deb, you can make the motion.
So now I'll make the motion.
So actually, no, the motion's back before us. My motion's back before us.
Okay.
You don't have to make another.
So you just need to.
We'll just stay with the motion.
We have to stay with the motion.
The motion is to use the balance of the 2 million dollars, which is 682,500 for bathrooms.
No.
That wasn't the motion.
It has to be the same motion.
It has to be the same motion.
Isn't that what you said?
No, I said it slightly different.
Go ahead, Joe.
Can you read it back? Court reporter?
682,500 for the bathrooms and locker rooms.
If possible.
If possible.
We don't have enough.
As much as possible.
There's not enough.
But he just put it that way, just so appropriate. It was also the locker room.
That was the only motion that he made, right?
Yeah, correct.
So, so moved.
No, it's already before us. You don't have to.
I just have to say it?
So a motion to reconsider.
It should be considered.
So now she has to facilitate a vote.
Yes, this didn't have to be this difficult, guys. Okay, so I have a motion and a second to reconsider.
Motion's back before us.
The vote is back, the motion is back in front of us.
Mike's original motion.
All those in favor?
Two, three, four, five.
This is the vote to reconsider.
No.
This is the vote to give them the money.
I have a question.
Okay.
Discussion's appropriate. Go ahead.
It is very likely that there won't be enough money to complete, you know, like half a bathroom left. Okay, so in that eventuality, what happens with that remainder of money?
It goes back into the pot, the casino pot.
You're giving them the money if they can't, if they can't.
They're going to spend.
They're going to spend all that money.
But if it can't be spent on the earmarked purpose, what happens to us?
Then money.
Jerry, you understand that already?
Yeah.
But it's really important to remember.
Do we have to say that?
What's really important to remember is there's a sunset clause on, on this, it's June. So if money does come back, then we can always bring it back in front of the council to see what we want to do with that remaining money. Because James, right, you can't, like.
If we can't spend it, then.
You can't do a half a bathroom. So that little amount, and it would be a little amount, I bet you, would come back to us. And then we have until June to make a decision on whatever comes back to us.
Well, then part of this question.
Right, and 35.
Part of this question might be then, if they had another need, like, in the cafeteria or in the kitchen, could we?
I would like it to come back to us. But that's what Mike's motion is.
There's also a possibility in a year from now, they'll get money back from the state, correct?
It'll come back to the capital account to be reallocated.
That could be used for something.
And we have said it before, and we're going to try to work on this. Whatever they get back is reimbursement. We're going to put. Whatever they get back as reimbursement, we're going to put in a restricted fund just for that.
Okay.
So we're trying to, a capitalist, we're trying to work on that. We're trying to see if we can do that. I think we can, but it has, I think it has to be voted, I'm not quite sure how that's going to work, but we do it for pay as you throw.
Yep.
We do it for other things. So there is a way to do it. I'm not sure it has to go out to vote to the people. I'm not positive. Don't think so, but I'm not.
I haven't heard about this, so.
Yeah, I know, Mike's looking at me very blankly.
We did this, we did this with the police cars.
Yes, we did that.
We did it with the police cars.
Right, right.
So keep that, and keep that in mind, this money that we're spending in the bathrooms, we're going to get about 35% back.
Right.
Which they're going to be able to do.
So, so can I clarify one thing? Cause I don't want them to be in a box. If they go out and they get a purchase order to do the bathrooms and they start in, let's say April and they don't finish till August, they're obligated to spend that money.
Right.
They're not spending because they didn't spend it by June 30th.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay, I, I don't want that.
That's in common. That's in common.
Just want to make sure it's clear.
We talked about that with the town money, like.
No, I, I agree, I just.
We're putting some in the recycle center, it's not going to be done by.
I just don't want anybody to say they didn't spend it by June 30th, they have to send it back.
Okay.
So can we vote?
Move, move the motion.
Move it.
The state rebates could be covered at the meeting.
Move the motion.
I'm moving the motion, let's do it again. All those in favor? Against? Upstayed, so one, two, three, four, four. Oh, no, five.
Five, one, one, five, one, one.
One, one, one.
I can't even count today. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, guys.
When it comes to any of that bidding stuff. Doctor Sankione, your member, your administration.
Yes, thank everyone, hopefully we can work together.
If I can help you with getting this stuff out to bid, getting on the state website and any of that stuff.
Thank you. Yeah, so just to depart, I, I really appreciate everybody, this is a process, we are working together and we're learning.
Yep.
So thanks.
All right.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm not doing any of this. Okay. All right, we're going to move on.
Denise?
He has to close his, this.
Oh, he has to close his meeting.
Close my meeting. Yeah.
Thank you, Mike, I didn't know what you were pointing at.
Ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Opposed?
I usually do that.
Okay, 4-0, thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So, so this should be a little easier, I hope?
Yeah, I got to introduce that. Town administrator ratification of employment agreement with Joseph R. Kaufman to serve as part-time.
No, 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 E.
Discussion impossible vote.
CARES money, just above it.
Oh, my God.
So this, this should be fairly.
I thought it was a lot further down than that.
So I'll read it for you. Discussion impossible vote on administrative recommendation for CARES funding expenditures following our, our legal procurement requirements, following all legal procurement requirements. We have $400,000 in CARES money that has to be expended by June 30th. We've been saving some of our police overtime monies, expenditures, our fire department overtime monies. Um, we can obligate $260,000 to acquire an ambulance, which would be completely covered under the CARES money because it's COVID related. Um, we have some PPE requirements townwide that the fire department buys for us periodically. And there was, um, we're in the, in the middle of looking at, um, a radio system that is in desperate need of repair and upgrade. In the meantime, just some portables and a limited amount of those at that. We'd be looking probably at like $50,000 to outfit some, some radio equipment that would be also utilized in the, um, COVID mitigation matters. All of these would be qualified under the CARES money and it would help mitigate some of the issues and any, uh, at least the potential capital cost of putting something on the budget for an ambulance.
Okay, so you basically need a vote?
Yep.
Any discussion on this?
Have a, ask a question?
Yep.
We're on E and five, fire, townwide, PPE, 15,000. What's the PPE?
PPE would be any of these masks, shields, things that we use for vaccine clinics, gloves, cleaning supplies, anything and it's townwide, so it's for all our departments.
So that doesn't include the, um, the AED?
Oh, no, that's a whole different, that's a whole different.
That's a whole different thing, okay.
But, but we could look at that as part of that. Um, I mean, that's.
Well, we did buy, um, oh, no, not AEDs.
No, we haven't done the AEDs, I was going, that's what's going to come out of the American Recovery.
It's going to come out. Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion, I'll make that a motion.
Make a motion to accept all five items?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Um, any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
So the next item, F, would be the discussion impossible vote on disposition of surplus vehicles, uh, that are sitting around DPW Police Department. Since the last time the council voted, and it was the prior council, I think there were probably like 12 vehicles and the chief could kind of give me a little bit more heads. I know that we've been counting the vehicles, taking the bid numbers, getting them ready, but there are far more vehicles now that we need to surplus.
Get rid of them.
And, and I want to, but I also want all the proceeds that come from that to go back into this capital account that we've just been using.
I'll make that a motion.
Hang on, Joe.
We've got to get.
You have a speaker.
We just get.
Good evening again, um, there's 23, just so everyone knows. And some of those vehicles, as those of you who come in the back of the police department, we're running a junkyard back there. Some of them have been very useful for us because we've been able to salvage parts, but the majority of those vehicles are over 20 years old. If I may, and I'll defer to the administrator and the solicitor on this, uh, the deputy police chief has reached out to all of the local scrapyards, every single one of them townwide are entrusted. So if we're going to put this out to bid, I would just ask if it would be okay if we would restrict it to Tiverton business owners only.
No.
Okay?
Illegal.
Okay. Wasn't sure because I, you know, we were looking at it as.
I'll have to arrest you, sorry.
You can try, sir. We were just looking, because they're all interested in, in purchasing that, so.
There are a couple of vehicles that would go out on Muni bid that are separate and apart.
Correct.
Than the scrap vehicles that have more value than just a scrap.
What we're looking to do with the vehicles that are basically, they want it for the catalytic converters alone.
Yeah.
So, and we want to kind of structure the bid that instead of coming in just cherry picking all the vehicles, there's 23 of them that we want to get rid of, take all 23.
So could, could we structure a bid in such a way that we could, uh, rank them and preference them by putting criteria? That if you're within so many miles of town, you get so many points if you're. I mean, could you, Mike, would you do that with some others?
So, Mike, let me, I had to put a bid together for my job for a, an auditor. And we were able to put in, it was a state bid, we were able to put in that reference to somebody who lived within a certain, um, distance because we didn't want to have to pay for flights. Now, did we get somebody? No, but we put it in the bid.
Well, that's the savings. I mean, you imagine someone bidding who's local is going to put in a, a lower bid because they, they don't have to transport it as much or hire it because they don't have to transfer as much, so that's, that should be built into the bid already.
Okay. Okay.
Were elected to have any criteria? If we had an ordinance that gives you a lot, you can put bonus points for, you know, local people, you can do that, but we don't have such bonus, so.
So I'll continue with my motion.
Thank you.
Make a motion to get rid of them.
Yeah, there you go.
Joe. Does that include the antiques?
Everything.
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 So the motion that Joe's making is to approve the disposition of the surplus vehicles with proceeds going to the restricted capital account. A second? Second by bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Ian Amos?
Thank you.
Now I can do my other one. Town administrator ratification of employment agreement with Joseph R. Kaufman to serve as part-time zoning officer from July 1st, 2021 through July.
So Joe's contract ended June 30th.
Yeah.
And he obviously had some family medical issues that he was dealing with for a part of the summer. He's back, um, on his regular part-time schedule. Uh, when he's here, he does an excellent job. He is very good at what he does. He's very good with our constituents. He handwalks them through the violations that they've committed, um, he, and he walks them through the municipal court process to the extent that we have to. So he is very adept at doing the job. It would be very difficult to find somebody else to do that at the moment. Um, I don't have any issues with his work ethic when he's here. We just had some issues during the period, um, when he had some issues with his family, which have been mitigated and hopefully they're gone for good.
Any further discussion?
Not the family.
Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to ratify the employment agreement with Joseph R. Kaufman to serve as part-time zoning officer from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor? Discussion impossible vote to advertise for candidates for municipal court judge, two year term commencing in November of the year between the general election. Joe, do you want to speak on this?